You said if Yanis.
Thank you, I do, Benny.
Sounds like that.
Oh, here we go, I was just in the notes, we're waiting. Take your time, we haven't done anything, just came on.
Thank you.
Oh, what's this? Yeah, just give me one second. I've got one too.
Yeah.
There's a different one though. A bunch of information too.
Well, it's different.
The paperwork going on, like a good bureaucracy.
We'll stand for the pledge as soon as the chairman is ready.
Dan, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
Certain. Pledge related to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Roll call vote.
Just roll a vote, oh, no vote.
Roll call.
Good vote.
Danny David. Roger Mahew. Mark Serbuk. Frank Scott.
Here.
Approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections?
I have an addition that I'd like to make to the agenda under new business.
Go ahead, sir.
We could add, move claims down to D and for C, put in Department of Health and Human Services fund transfer.
Repeat that?
Move claims to D.
Yes.
And in C, insert. Department of Health and Human Services Funds Transfer. Oh, that's this resolution, yeah, right, you got a resolution for.
Any other additions or corrections? Someone like to entertain a motion to?
I'd make the motion that we, with the agenda, with the decisions.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk.
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries declarations of conflicts of interest, any commissioners?
I have none.
None.
You had.
Review of minutes, October ninth, twenty twenty five, regular annual meeting minutes.
I reviewed the annual meeting minutes and I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
Motion Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk, any further discussion?
They can say any.
Oh.
Of the meeting minutes?
Sorry.
That's okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, item four B, October sixteenth, twenty twenty five, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
Motion to, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Make motion support the minute.
Motion Commissioner Wiltie?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, public comment and agenda item matters only. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? No public comment on the phone, correspondence, we received correspondence from Grand Travis County related to release of opiate settlement funds of service providers in Michigan Association of County Clerks, opposition to rank Michigan vote ballot proposals, those have been received and filed, consent agenda. Commissioners?
Well, I think we can consent to a few of these. Can I ask? Randy? Question?
Go ahead.
Is this the latest, one of the newest revisions?
Yes.
Okay, so what we've seen before has now been corrected?
Yes, there were some updated forty twenty nine forms.
Okay.
On the consent agenda, wait, you're back.
Well, I'm thinking, uh, B, C, D, all the opioid.
B, oh, hey guys. B, C.
Um.
D.
Well, you don't know of a lot of this stuff, do you? Have you, have you watched the meeting?
I did.
Oh, you did, okay, well then, if you've watched the meeting, then I'll go ahead with E on the hard cap and. Um. F, yeah, F, G, well.
I would like separately.
G separate.
I'd do G and H separately.
Okay.
All right.
So you, on the consent agenda, you would like seven B through. F?
B C.
How do you guys feel about that?
Fine with that.
So item seventy is, are you fine with that, Commissioner Serbuk?
Yes, ma'am.
Then I'll make a motion to consent those B, C, D, E, F.
Support.
Those, uh, item seventy, resolution to accept a proposal for fiscal year twenty twenty six Narcan Distribution Back Stacking Using Designated Opiate Settlement Funds. Item and seven C, resolution to accept a proposal for implementation of an educational intervention project using designated opiate settlement funds. Item seventy, resolution to accept a proposal for funding an evidence-based approach to substance use disorder using designated opiate settlement funds. Item and seven E, resolution to adopt a medical benefit contribution limit for calendar year twenty twenty six. Item seven F, resolution to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty six fee schedule. Did I get them all?
Yep.
Okay. Questions? We have a motion Commissioner Scott, support from Commissioner Serbuk, further discussion? Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes, item seven A, resolution to approve twenty twenty five report to taxes to be apportioned pursuant to the General Property Tax Act. Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion Commissioner Scott?
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, Randy, do you have anything to add to that? Well, wow. Kind of startled me. Come on up, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I apologize, there are a few corrections, when I went through finalized everything, uh, had made some rounding errors on the rollback, so we corrected all the of the was correct and we submitted to you for this meeting for approval.
Is there any, any of these, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It needs, um, well, change of standout, or they just small corrections?
Most of them are small corrections, just, the statute reads you have to round down, they can't just round normally, so they're a thousandth of a mill. Uh, Mills Township had, they had, uh, forgot to let, request a levy for the library, uh, that was, they passed a election for it, they forgot to include it on their form and, uh, Richland Township had made a mistake on there, so they were, they're just minor mistakes other than there was a lot of discussion with the Woodmore Prescott Schools, uh. It's, they had to redo their forty eighteen form, they had a mistake on the form originally and it's been.
Okay. What you doing, good, good with me?
You said Richland Township?
Yes. They had made a mistake on one of the villages on the rollbacks, so we corrected that. But a little more military than they did.
Good. Any further discussion? Any questions for Randy? Roll, roll call vote.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Item seventy, resolution to honor Ogumaw County Veteran of the Year Randy Allen Hoake, is anybody, is he happen to be here? Is Randy on the phone? Would a commissioner, unfortunately, the more I talk, the more I cough, is there a commissioner that's willing to read this? I, I think this is supposed to be read. The actual resolution I have, this, you have the resolution on your iPad, would you like to read that?
Yeah.
Okay.
This resolution sponsored by the Veterans Affairs Director Jeff Nichols and the Veterans Affairs Committee to honor Randy Allen Huck.
Huck.
Denock. Uh, the Ogumaw County Veteran of the Year. Mr. Huck is, Mr. Huck honorably performed military service in the United States Army and has exhibited the the highest level of commitment and loyalty to his community, the various service organizations by serving for twenty one years as the commander, disabled veteran, Amer- disabled American Veterans Chapter Seventy Three, fourteen years as chairman of the Ogumaw County Veterans Museum, ten years as Veterans Trust, Michigan Veterans Trust Fund Committee. Member of the American Legion Post three seventy and American Legion Post one oh three. Member of the Ogumaw County Veterans Alliance Military Funeral Honors Team. Volunteers in conducting fundraisers for various veterans organizations. Ogumaw County Veterans Museum Toys for Tots, along with many other community service activities. Approval of this resolution will declare Tuesday, November eleventh, twenty twenty five as the Randy Allen Huck Day throughout Ogumaw County.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. I don't believe Jeff's on the phone. Let's see him, woman. Um, would someone like to make that motion?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk?
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie? Comments? Where is that, um, has Jeff announced, uh, where that typically they have a celebration, they have a, like a luncheon for this individual celebration in the?
Well, that to you, um, he told me, I don't remember, it's the same as it's been in the past.
Done, I'm meeting last week.
But I'll, I'll send something out to remind you.
Yeah, can we send a reminder out? It's nice if a commissioner is able to make it, I, I have, I didn't go to last year but the year before and it was a very nice, um. Very, very nice day. Very nice celebration they do for that veteran, so, uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, item seven A, resolution to designate a county parcel for use as a community park to honor and memorialize veterans of the United States military.
Can I read that?
Yeah, I can.
This resolution sponsored by the Veterans Memorial Park Subcommittee, the County Boards of Commissioners Act assigns the care and management of county park, county property to the Board of Commissioners at their meeting held October seventeenth, the Veterans Memorial Parks Subcommittee recommended repurposing the underutilized county parking lot at the corner of Eighth and Ripley Streets in West Branch for the use of a veterans memorial park to honor and remember the service and sacrifice of those who served in the armed forces. The subcommittee noted the ideal location of the property, lot size, accessibility as key reasons for the recommendation. Approval of this resolution will document authorization to repurpose the parcel as a park and will allow veterans of organizations to begin fundraising efforts. Make motion to approve the resolution as presented.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk?
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie, discussion? Penny?
Is it gonna be the whole parking lot or just half like they started talking?
What? I mean, Ladonna, Ladonna's here, but.
Ladonna, you wanna come on up?
But only, we're gonna keep a third of that.
At least a third for parking.
Wanna come on up, Ladonna? Cause you're chairing this committee, correct?
Yeah, well, no, not chairing it.
Quarterback.
We weren't having a chair, we're just having a facilitator.
Okay.
Quarterback.
So I'm the quarterback, the facilitator. So we're gonna use the whole lot, um, but we're gonna keep the asphalt and a third of it for parking.
No issues with any of this, Denise has checked.
It's not gonna be for the city, it's gonna be for that. Parking.
Uh, you mean, uh, it's our county lot right now and it's currently county parking. Um, so we will be losing, um, some of that current parking space.
Nobody uses it.
No one uses it anymore.
Right, so what I'm saying is, when, once we give that to you, then it is no longer the county, it's, it's.
No, it still belongs to the county.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be a county park.
It's a county park, you can still use the parking lot.
Oh, one hundred percent.
Okay, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah. Yeah, if, cause it's real close to the annex building, so if they're having some major event there and they need extra parking, there's no.
Right, they're down the corner too, and I don't even know if it's closed, but.
Yeah.
I'm sure they've used it.
One hundred, yeah, if they have something major going on, it's a nice overflow.
Yes.
So, any other questions?
Tim, you have anything to add to this?
I don't, other than we took a field trip over there, um, I mean, I drive by that lot every day, but it's completely different to get out, walk into that part, parking lot and realize just how big it is, and it, it's pretty impressive. Um, probably of all the options, it would be the one that would allow this, uh, project to get underway the quickest, uh, there'll be fundraising that goes on and so forth, but we don't have to wait for a demolition of another building or relocate, uh, people who are parking, it's really very, uh, underutilized to say the least as a paved area.
We had a meeting and we, uh, we kind of brainstormed before we took a walk over there and some of the things that we would like the park to have are what we think are important. You know, parking, accessibility, you know, having it being reasonably adjacent to the current, you know, county structures, um, not being burdensome on any of the neighbors, like adding value, um, so it kind of checked all the boxes, you know, originally we're looking at two, uh, uh, two sites and, you know, um, Serbuk came up with the idea of using this third and it's, well, the other ones had some pros and some cons, this one seemed to, oh, so, that's why we're requesting that.
Nice, any comments, Commissioner Wiltie, I think you're, you're on that, so committee.
Yeah, no, I'm really looking forward to this, we got a, a good start and, um, really looking forward to what we're gonna build there.
Okay.
I should also mention too, that there was some discussion, um, about the current memorial and we decided that we're not gonna touch the current memorial, that there's no reason why we can't have two. And the, the Veterans Park's gonna be in addition to, but not taking place of the current arch that we have.
If I could add to that. When we discussed it at committee, the whole, um, Jeff was on and some of the, they do, like, some of the things moved from over there into the new one.
With the rocks.
The rocks, the branches of service, things like that, so, there are some things that.
Sure, that's on.
Yeah.
That's.
Jeff, you're on the phone, do you have anything to add to this? I believe you just joined us and we're looking at the community park. The county parcel for use of the.
Um, I can only, oops.
Go ahead.
There we go, I can only, I can only tell you that, uh, what, what some of the veterans had, have addressed to me, um. I know there was talk of now, I just heard that, and again, I apologize, I was late for the meeting, so I didn't hear what was just said, so the I was told by, I believe it was Ken or Laura, that the movement of the rocks and pole, I guess they're gonna, the plan now is to leave that there as like a second memorial. And I think they're okay with that, if that was the plan, but I think that's what Laura told me.
Yes, that's what Ladonna just, uh, said.
No, we're, we're good with that, if, if, I think, I think that's a good idea, um, I have no problems with it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Uh, roll call vote.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
And Jeff, while you're on the phone still, can you, uh, remind everybody of the date, time and location for, uh, the Veteran of the Year?
I sure can, uh, it's going to be November eleventh, which is a Tuesday, eleven o'clock at the Forward's Conference Center, uh, by the Shell Station out there on, uh, out in, uh, Hamburger Hill.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, new business, prosecuting attorney's office vacancy, Ladonna, come on up.
No, this is why I'm here. So, I'm, unfortunately, I have a vacancy in my office, Courtney Wiggah gave us her notice. I am devastated and depressed because she was an excellent employee and did a great job. So, we did post and we're gonna be hiring and according to the contract, I have to notify you guys, so, that's why I'm here.
How long was she with your department?
I think around five years.
So, what period of time, was there a reason that you're able to state, is there a promotion, is there a?
Well. It's, um, she does TikTok videos.
Oh.
And she makes more in one day on TikTok than she does working for me all week.
So, financial?
It's financial.
Okay, that's what I was, okay. So, questions?
No, I'm.
I seen the posting.
I'm in favor of the prosecutor filling your position.
Questions, Commissioner Wiltie? Thanks.
And then you just had another comment since I, I just, I have the floor. I want you guys to keep in mind, and I don't know what your plans are for next year, but it is a major celebration for our country, two hundred and fifty years. Um, so, I thought one of the things that we could do is we have two major display cases in the hall that have not been touched since I started working here in two thousand and one. That maybe we could contact the historical, um, society or the local museum to see if maybe they had some artifacts that they could lend us, that could be on temporary display to celebrate, you know, this momentous occasion that we have coming out, because I know the whole world, for the whole country is gonna be celebrating in some super forum. We probably should have a couple of events scheduled too.
We'll need to keep that on our agenda.
Great idea.
Yeah. Have you done anything more? We, you discussed, um, going up the stairs or that wall, has anything, Ben, I haven't heard anything more about that.
Oh, I think I did, did I give it to you? The, um, I did an application. And I think I gave it to, that's as far as I got, am I in charge of that now too? These meetings, not in Florida.
Well, you brought it up and I didn't, nothing more became of it, and I look at that wall, I glance at it every time I walk in.
It's terrible, we need, we need a mural there, or some art. You know, um, if you want it, it's a phone call, I can call the art gallery to see if they.
What wall are we talking about? Going upstairs.
We talked about getting possibly a high school or someone painting it, to somebody doing something that, that they could be proud of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, let's do that.
We gotta.
Hi, it's a good idea.
About it.
Okay. Okay. Fine, I don't mind.
We.
You know, the guy that paints all those railroad cars, maybe we can get him to come.
We had had discussion about it, anyways, we'll continue to talk about that, I was wondering if anything more became of it.
No, we have that, and then the other thing I want to invite you guys to is, um, we started kind of our tradition, our department heads, um, a few years back of starting the year with the Pledge of Allegiance. Um, we usually ask the Veteran of the Year to come and lead it, uh, lead that, um, pledge. We're probably gonna do it right before we go on New Year's break so that we can start the year and with that, um, you know, I always encourage the department heads to, you know, um, allow all their staff to come down, we meet here. Um, we start off with the pledge and it's a great start for the beginning of the year. I'm gonna put a note in all your boxes, um, it's in the morning and I know a lot of you work, but if you're available and you wanna come, we would really encourage you.
You're gonna be here in the morning?
Thank you.
For this, I will. Or in the.
You just go ahead and quarter, you go ahead and quarterback this and we'll get it.
Discussion on this vacancy position. Do we do a roll call vote for that?
But do we need a motion then?
Oh, I thought we already did it.
We didn't move.
Okay.
We don't really have to.
It's within our budget.
Commissioner Wiltie's name down, did you guys add to that motion?
We did the veterans.
Does anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion with, give the prosecutor permission to fill a vacancy within her office, support.
Motion from Commissioner Serbuk, support from Commissioner Scott, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, items eight B, administrator slash controller vacancy, Tim, you have the floor.
We got a couple of items here for you, the first one, I handed out the official formal resignation letter, we will, uh, or the board to actually accept that.
Someone like to make that motion?
Yeah.
Motion Fisher Mahew.
I will second the motion with regret.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk, uh, discussion, Tim, you have the floor.
Um, well, this is absolutely no reflection of county whatsoever, um, I absolutely enjoyed my time here, no question about that. Uh, opportunities that you would receive at no other county when you're in my position, so for that, I'm, I'm quite grateful. Um, Gratchit County offered me, uh, a similar position at their county, a county seats in Ithaca, uh, frankly, um, but no, right out there, strictly a personal financial decision on my part, uh, and there's, um, absolutely no reason to even, uh, uh, try to get into any kind of, uh, negotiation over it, uh, because this county just, uh, would not survive the grief you would receive if we tried to match what they're going to pay there, uh, but that, that's strictly it, and I'm very sincere when I say I've really enjoyed the five and a half years here, I would not have had this experience anywhere else and I wouldn't trade it for anything.
Sorry to see you go.
Questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions, but um, Tim called me and broke the news to me and I was, of course, a little disappointed, but obviously in life, I support anybody that has opportunities to do better for themselves. It was the third year here and I've worked with Tim on a lot of different projects. Um, been our administrator and, you know, now controller and I, I wish him, wish him the best. I just asked of him that his time left here is brief and, and Tim's obviously involved with a lot of things, like, for example, helps run our opiate settlement, he helps run our transit, which, you know, man, transit meeting today, but I just asked him that if he would please really work hard, finish this up to make sure this transition is as smooth as possible, I don't see any way possible that we'll have another person in place, but, you know, a lot of things written down on paper that'll be able to be handed on to the next person or to an intern or whatever we have will be very, very valuable. I just asked him to really work hard to make sure the transition here is as smooth as possible and we can have as much information in place for that next person that takes over his job.
Commissioner Serbuk.
I'm sad to see you go, Tim, I have said, I might get on the commission the last time, best thing this county ever did, in my opinion, being an employee for almost thirty six years was have a county administrator, I don't know how we ever supplied without one, I really don't, you know, so I appreciate everything that you've done and the roadmap you set for us and, uh, I'm gonna miss you a lot. So, thank you for doing what you did for us, Tim, I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Mahew.
No.
Well, I, I will dittle, um, what the other commissioner said, I got the phone call, appreciate that personal phone call. You were the first one, uh, to fill this position, uh, prior to that, uh, things were a little bit more chaotic, they did run, but they were a little bit more chaotic, uh, definitely added some organization to uh, the commissioner board itself, um, so you kind of, uh, you kind of, uh, made this, this position, so sorry to see you go, but I do totally understand and appreciate all the work that you did put into the position, so now it's, I, I, now it's time to move forward, so, um, I think Commissioner Scott and myself has gathered some information, I received the phone call Tuesday. Um, got back on the grid on Tuesday and have been, uh, redoing some research and making some phone calls and, uh, making sure that we're, uh, able to fill this position and we do it, uh, in a timely fashion, but we do it the right way. Um, cause this position is, is very vital and the, the individual that fills this position needs to be a good fit. So, uh, we definitely need to do our due diligence here and, um, make sure we, we do our best to make the right choice moving forward, so, before we move forward with what Commissioner Scott and I found out, let's take a, uh, a roll call on accepting Tim's resignation.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Um, I, yeah, but, this is the same, what, the information that you have is similar to how we recruited Tim, so I'm gonna take the lead and then I'm gonna let you, okay, cause mine was different, I, uh, reached out to Mac related, let that, kind of let them know what was going on and if they had any, any, um, direction, any recommendations, and he did, I, I talked to, oh gosh, Derek at Mac. And he led me to an individual through the Michigan Leadership Institute, which I'm sure you're familiar with, a Chet Janik who actually helps with recruiting, um, administrator slash controller, I did get an email that I'm gonna read out loud, uh, from Chet today. I reached out to Mac on Tuesday, sent an email to Chet, he responded today, so either also is a, uh, presentation that he, he, I will forward to all of you guys, I haven't had an opportunity to look at it yet, but I am gonna read the email that I received from Chet. Thank you, uh, Chair David, thank you for the email and I'll be glad to provide you with information about a potential partnership with the Michigan Leadership Institute to assist Ogumaw County with the search for the soon to be vacant administrator slash controller position, let me start this correspondent by. Let me start this correspondent by introducing myself. I am Chet Janick and I served as Leelanaw County Administrator for almost eleven years until retiring December of twenty twenty-two. Before being a county administrator, I was a school superintendent and college administrator for thirty-two years. I'm currently a consultant with the Michigan Leadership Institute, assisting county commissions and other local government units in identifying candidates for leadership positions. If the Oglema County Commissioners are interested in having a consultant assist in the search for a new county administrator slash controller, I'm willing to provide a presentation at a board meeting and or written proposal to assist the commissioners with the search process. As you undone, undoubtedly know, hiring a new county adminis- administrator slash controller is a daunting task. It's critical to, critical to Oglema County's long-term success that the process is well organized and structured. The Michigan Leadership Institute will assist you at a very reasonable fee. I've attached a PowerPoint presentation that outlines a detailed search process, provides an estimated timeline for recruiting county administrator slash controller candidates and provides additional information about um MLI. Since twenty twenty-three, I personally assisted with the following Board of Commissioners with their search for a new administrator. Branch County, Calcasca County, Lelandal County, Marquette County, and Mesaki County. I've also worked with the Village of Northport, Chocolay Township and Garfield Townships in their leadership searches with successful results. Thank you in advance for potentially considering this partnership with the Michigan Leadership Institute. As I said before, I am certainly willing to give a presentation to the Board of Commissioners and to answer any questions you may have either by email, phone, or in person. Uh, one last thing, Mac did state that they are able to assist with um an interim administrator slash controller, and, and I talked to Derek a little bit about what that meant. And he said it could be um thirty days, it could be three months, it could be up to a year. Typically what they and they can help with that. Typically, an individual that, that um is an interim is, he said typically somebody that is retired, not looking for a full-time position. But hey, you know, I'll go, I'll go do this for thirty days and interim until you guys are able to find because the chances of finding a new individual um at the date, which is November twenty-first is your last day is, is impossible. So, there is a possibility of interim. Mac can connect us there. Um, I didn't ask about a fee, we already paid the membership. So, that's where I'm at with that. Mac is the one that uh that correlated me with this organization, the Michigan Leadership Institute, so that's the information that I found out. There is a twenty-page um presentation that I will forward to all of you, hopefully tomorrow.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Well, first off, I wanna say thank you for the promise. This is very, very important and we obviously know we're gonna have a little bit of downtime, but I do like the idea of a possible interim. Did they say anything, Commissioner David, about um, how long it would possibly take to get an interim in place?
Um, that's what this, I, and again, I just received this today. I had a full day today. Um, coming back from vacation is definitely not, not fun in the office along with a lot of sick patients right now. So, I haven't had an opportunity to read this. I did print it off, but I believe that information is in here.
And the only reason I say that, and again, we don't wanna rush this and get an interim that's just not a good fit, but little less than a month Tim's here. If we would have an interim, we know it's an interim for a short amount of time. If even if a week or a week and a half a crossover, I think while Tim's here could be extremely.
And maybe I, I, I um had a pretty long, extensive conversation with Derek at Mac and it sounded like he knew, or seemed to know uh quite a bit about our county and, and felt like he would be able to help us with that interim and, and maybe see who he thought would fit. We pay a pretty substantial um annual dues to Mac, so um, uh, hopefully they are able to assist with this at least interim position. So, he felt pretty confident about that.
So, with that being said, is, is that something that tonight we will make a decision on for you to keep those talks going because I think those talks, if you have time tomorrow, should continue just because of this short timeframe we have.
I absolutely will. Definitely make no decision um by any means without support from the board. I just wanted to reach out, have communication. I know the last time with the Michigan Municipal League, I didn't know if they were the only organization that helped with this. Um, so that's why I reached out to Mac. And again, it's because we pay them a pretty substantial amount of money. I was hoping, and they did. They responded very quickly. Um, they provided me with some resources, so I will continue to have any, any information that I get, I will forward um, to you guys.
Thank you very much.
So, Commissioner Scott.
Okay, well, I, I reached out to Michigan Municipal League and I called Jer- Mr. Jerry Richards. He's the man that did our search last time for us. And uh, was able to talk with him on Monday morning. He uh, uh, he will not be able to do the searching uh, or captain the searching because he's off right now with uh issues. Home issues for a couple of months, but he's already sent us uh information on another team. They do this all over the state of Michigan. Um, they were excellent last time. I thought they were very complete about everything. We didn't look a different way and when I was talking to Jenny the other day, she made a point. I think we were a Mac member the last time. Maybe I voted them out.
Right.
And so we were, we did not tap them for, for it. I um I brought up the issue about the interim uh manager uh to Mr. Richards. Um, he has generated a big list, but he called, called me today and I just happened to be with Mark. He called, called me today and said, and told me about a, a man that's from Mount Pleasant. And uh, that's retired that, but he's still in tight with the county administrators. As a matter of fact, he's going to the national um convention down in Florida, right here this week or next. And it, it sounded pretty good. Now, my idea and my idea, I don't know that we have to have a five-day five-day-a-week interim. Maybe even just three days a week would really help us out. Uh, we could probably save some money. It would open up, I think it would open up the field bigger if we're looking for that retired guy that that wants to help us out. Yeah, I'm thinking somebody that comes in, starts setting up an agenda for us. Could, could uh, could uh attend many of the committee meetings during the, during the month, then be here on Thursday afternoon into the evening with us for the meetings. I think it, I think it can cover our bases, save us some money and uh, and get us through this, this time. As far as the executive search with Municipal League, uh, like last time, we, we joined the Municipal League to get a discount. Richard said that there will be a discount if we join again for a year. I don't know why they just don't give you a membership for a year and cut the price back, but but anyway, we'll probably end up joining if we go that route. Right now, I think since we got two prospective search things, uh, maybe we need to hear from each one of them and, and I don't know which one we wanna use.
What I was just thinking is, is we, we don't have a scheduled meeting next Thursday. Uh, how about I gather, continue to gather some information? You sent all of that, so we can actually look at that proposal. I know it's in front of us now, but uh, um we meet next Thursday, maybe let's hopefully plan, we can make this not extensive, but everybody has their time to do their research on these two different proposals, reach out for questions, and we meet next Thursday just to discuss a committee of the whole.
Invite an agent from each one to come in, explain their stuff.
Or have them come via Zoom.
If they're.
If they couldn't work, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, this chat was more than happy to. Um, are you familiar with, with um with the uh chat from the Michigan Leadership Institute?
Yeah, I actually worked with him briefly while I was at Leelanaw County all those decades ago. Um, he's uh got a very good reputation among counties. He's been to a couple of our conferences and presentations as well.
So, no insight? You're not willing to?
Um, it'd be wrong for me to recommend one over the other, but they're both very good.
Perfect. So why, how do you guys feel about a meeting next week, just concentrating on this? So that way we get energy, our diligence. I will see if Mac, if Derek's able to join us.
Too much over two weeks.
We'll see if Derek's able to join us and I will see if Chet's able to join us. In the meantime, I will forward these proposals, my proposal to you guys that I received. Are you guys okay with that? We could continue this conversation indefinitely and get nowhere.
Yeah, we need to keep moving this forward.
Okay.
What time Thursday are we gonna?
I'm, I can't meet before five-thirty. I, I'm.
Good.
Five-thirty next Thursday?
Works for me.
Okay.
Cause I have, I have a commitment that's maybe just after.
Or even five-thirty-two, if you gotta be here late.
After five-thirty, I'm good. That was my question.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask you, but they wanted me to ask you, you know.
Uh, okay, so do we don't need to vote on that for next Thursday, do we? Okay.
Nope, but I do have to post it, so.
So, five-thirty next Thursday?
Yes.
Uh, item, eight, the resolution to approve DHHS fund transfer. Commissioner, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, ma'am, I will make the motion that we approve the resolution of DHHS fund transfer.
Motion, Commissioner Serbuk.
For.
Support from Commissioner Wiltzy. Commissioner Serbuk, do you want to tap the floor?
Yes, ma'am. The county allocates five thousand dollars to the Department of Health and Human Services annually. As of right now, there is two thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. It has been unspent. Uh, historically, we transfer that money to the DHHS Critical Needs Fund, which only stays in Oglema County. Assist people with the heat utilities. If they're unable to take and secure any other assistance, whether it be through the normal DHHS channels or through two-one-one, uh and unfortunately, the situation we find ourselves in with the federal shutdown, it looks like several of the program may be in jeopardy for the month of November. We are coming into the heating season now, so that twenty-one hundred dollars and change would, so really, or help very much if we need to take and uh help people with unspent or uh with heat in utilities, that unspent fund would help greatly, so I would ask that the commissioners approve this resolution.
Questions for Commissioner Serbuk. Commissioner Wiltzy.
Uh, don't really have a question. I'm liaison with the DHHS and um, they do a really good job for our county residents. Obviously, we know they don't spend the money just all willy-nilly. We've got money left over. I'd like to see it go into that uh fund balance, please.
Mr. Serbuk, or Commissioner Scott, sorry.
Um, Mark is, what's, what's? Yeah, what's the fund balance?
It is.
I'm the critical.
I can, I can tell you, hang on, I, I have it as of today's, matter of fact.
Do you remember how much we gave them last year?
It was about the same amount. It's about, historically, it's been.
Right around twenty. Right around two thousand, typically two thou- two thousand, twenty-five hundred.
I got it in the spreadsheet here, I just gotta find it. So, in the Oglema, I'll just compound the question. The Oglema County Critical Needs Fund, it's only Oglema County money goes in it?
Correct.
And it's only spent in Oglema County? And we're the one that put it in, put that money in there.
Oglema County allocates five thousand dollars each year. The current balance in that account as of today is is, is, is. Sorry, this. Eight thousand seven hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents.
So that, that.
Ten thousand.
The amount of money we put in last year didn't get spent then?
Correct. They only, they only spend it if it needs to be spent. They are very.
Okay, but the two thousand dollars, give or take, we put in last year didn't get spent. The two thousand we put in two years ago didn't get spent. And now you want more money in there?
Yes.
Roll call vote. Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
No.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
No.
Claims, claims, so a total of two hundred ninety-six thousand one hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-five cents.
I will make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion, Commissioner Scott.
Support.
Commissioner Serbuk, I believe you two reviewed claims. You guys have the floor.
Go ahead, Mark. You're the one that phoned the twelfth.
Go ahead.
Well, let's see, um we made our monthly allocation to the animal control or the animal shelter in a moment, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Two quarter or a quarterly appropriation to District Health Number Two in the thirty-two thousand three oh seven. Um, well-advanced community mental health. Their semi-annual con- or semi-annual contribution of twenty-eight four seventy-two. Uh the monthly retainer for our attorney at four thousand dollars. Their uh, their childcare partners and change was uh twelve thousand eight sixty-eight, which I think is about the norm. Uh, of the one that I really wanted to see is right next. Courthouse and Grounds for the old jail, electric bill. Now, get the, the gas bill is fifty-three dollars. Did some backtracking on what we have been paying for the last couple of months at the old jail.
More than that.
We, yes, I've we paid in August three hundred and seventy dollars and thirteen cents. September was three hundred and sixty-one ninety-three. And with shutting off those outside security lights, the bill went down to two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fours. So, it went down over a hundred dollars, twenty-five percent. We're shutting off those security lights on the outside. So, it did make a difference. It made a big difference. And I've been racking my brain and I've talked to some other people and trying to figure out what is still using electricity over there. The only thing I can think of, in all honesty, is the circulation pumps for the boiler unit that's over there.
What about the tower?
There, I, there isn't anything on that tower anymore. All that equipment's been moved out. Nine-one-one got the high ban out of there.
They did, we did.
It's, yeah, it's gone. There is nothing on that tower.
Reported that.
That, that's in that building. Now, there's still some microwave dishes up there. Whether those are operational or not, I don't know, but.
It's been about two months since nine-one-one got everything out of there.
Yes, yeah, when Breck and I went over, what was it, the ninth of September, was it?
Uh, the first two weeks.
Yeah, the, the equipment was gone when we went over in September, first part of September, so um, anyway, it, we did make a difference there by doing that. Um quarterly payment to Central Service for Central Services, for us common for seventeen thousand five fifty-one. Indigent Council was uh fifty-seven sixty-six. Workman's camp, but we pay the excellent fund more seventy-four uh jail. Paying up the Claire County, eight thousand four hundred dollars. There was a medical for Gladwin. We paid Gladwin twenty-two thousand three twenty. Medical, ten thousand four hundred and eighty-four fifty-seven. One inmate incurred six thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifteen cents in medical cost. Two other inmates were just over a thousand dollars. We paid Airneck uh twenty-three oh four. Our quarterly payment to the medical examiner's group, nine thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and fifty cents. Veterans was able to take an assistive veteran with rent payments. They were quite a ways behind from June to October. They spent five thousand dollars out of their fund to help that veteran maintain their, be able to keep their home. So, that's all I have for Mr. Scott. I'm sure I missed.
Commissioner Scott, do you have anything?
No, that was very thorough. Um but I, I, to talk about that draw, electricity draw. If we turn it off and it get, when it gets cold, it's gonna
Freeze.
Probably gonna freeze.
No, I'm not suggesting that we turn it off. I didn't suggest, I'm not suggesting that we turn those off.
I get it, I get it, but I don't know why we'd have them on. Really, I, I, maybe we should just do we care if it freezes or, or?
Yes, we do. I might.
Okay, then.
Yes, we do.
And then do we wanna drain it for the winter and turn them off? You know, I mean I don't, I, I don't think we, I don't like spending two hundred and fifty dollars a month just to heat in a building that not there, that nobody's gonna use. The jail part doesn't even have heat in it.
Tim, do you have anything?
Over my head. I, I don't know what happens if you do that.
Over my head. I, I don't know what happens if you do that.
I, and I don't know what they should, what they closed off over there as far as what portions of it are being heated or not heated. I thought that those, that the subblock areas, they turned those down to like fifty degrees or something. I, I don't know.
I was back there one time and they showed me the, the room that they used for.
Their property aging.
No, no, for change.
Yeah.
They were eating it with two Eden viewers. Which they told me that they only turn on when they go in there, but it was a good seventy degrees and nobody was there. But anyway, I mean, I was told all the, all the heating is, is out of the, the cell area.
It's very cold back there.
Yeah.
I recommend keeping an eye on it. We're, we're already being pretty due diligent about it. Um. And I appreciate the report. I, I think that when I was doing claims over the last couple of months, that, that, you know, there were numbers that the public likes, likes and should hear. So I appreciate that. So thank you. Roll call vote on claims. Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Unfinished business, any, any commissioners? Administrator slash controllers report.
A couple of things to update you on. You might remember from a few meetings now, we've discussed the UKG system. We had another meeting with them on, uh, I believe it was yesterday. It's like a long time ago, but, uh, we have made some significant progress. We will have our security screeners and bailiffs live on Monday, so they'll be punching in. Uh, and punching out, uh, the sheriffs, the issues with the overtime and the shift differential. Those calculations have been fixed. There are a couple of, uh, issues yet with certain, uh, employees. For whatever reason, they're not being, uh, uh, brought over or transferred to BSNA properly. They're being sent to the wrong departments and sometimes at the wrong calculations. We're gonna have another meeting with them next Wednesday morning, and we do expect the rest of these issues to have been cleaned up. We're gonna do some testing on, uh, Veterans Day on that holiday. That was the last big issue that they were having with payrolls, that some of the holidays weren't adding up correctly. I do believe they got that taken care of now, but it's gonna take us going through a holiday to confirm that. So on November eleventh, we're gonna know whether they were successful cleaning that up. The testing that they've done on their end, uh, and this is, uh, you know, non-live test, everything appears to work. So it looks like we'll have cleared all of those problems and everybody will be able to punch in and punch out accordingly without any, uh, uh, difficulty and, uh, trace these jobs will be much easier when it comes to actually doing payroll as it was advertised. So hopefully that will be the end of it. Uh, just one other thing, we did have a meeting of our healthcare coalition last week. That group did not disappoint. Uh, they did, uh, go over many options that Mesa offers in light of a sixteen percent increase. And we're able to, uh, we're one of the lucky ones because they were, Mesa was telling us about twenty and thirty percent increases on some of their other. And this is primarily a drug, uh, prescription drug issue in terms of those costs, the health component and usage of it was not out of line. So we are ready now for open enrollment to start, I believe it's, uh, November fifteenth through December first. Won't be an exact date, but that latter part of, remember, uh, Jay from Mesa, State Farm, Jay from Mesa will be here on site to, uh, help employees, uh, answer their questions and help them, uh, do the open enrollment process. And we will advertise that when the day's set. That seemed to help a lot last year. Particularly when there were just minor nuances, but employees weren't quite sure which plan would be better for them. Yeah, he's absolutely prepared with his spreadsheets to plug in everybody's, uh, uh, specific, uh, need, whether it be a two-person family or single. Plug them into all of the options and the employee can make an educated decision as to which one is best. We will still have a few plans that will continue the HSA contribution because they're under the cap. Unfortunately, about half of our plans are gonna be over the cap. But, uh, most of them are not that much. There is one premium plan that will still be over a hundred dollars per payroll. Uh, that will come out of a check, but we don't have, uh, a majority of our employees choosing that. They're choosing the more economical plans and overall our employees are very satisfied with the insurance and, and the quality of the, um, uh, correspondence and the, uh, communication they have with Mesa when there are issues. So that's the highlights unless you have any other question.
Questions for Tim, Commissioner Wiltzy? Commissioner Scott?
No.
Commissioner Mahew, Commissioner Serbuk.
No.
Hey. Um, I didn't see a written report. Are, are you gonna put that on our tablet when you get an opportunity?
Going to, it's, it's there. It's getting backed down to formatting, so it, um, ends up falling to the bottom of the list when we have other things that pop up, so.
Elected official and department head reports. We have the Building and Grounds Department and the Medical Examiner Report on our iPads. Uh, clerk, do you have a report?
Yep, Brett Gildon, New York County Clerk. Um, this past Sunday, Monday, Tuesday was the United County, uh, Officers Association Meeting. Um, that is the treasurers, registered deeds, clerks, strength commissioners. Um, there's one more, I can't remember what it is. Anyways, we met in Bay City. Um. They had Monday, the majority of the day, there were three different sessions. The same speaker, she was the emergency manager for Livingston County, and the presentation was phenomenal. Um, it was really eye-opening and I am excited to have a conversation with our emergency manager. Um, a- and I, I understand Livingston County is a lot bigger than us. They, they have more chances of having disasters and things happen, but, um, it just was really eye-opening to how we need to be more prepared for things. Um, so I'm looking forward to having a conversation with Mike Bowers about that. Um. And then also while I was there, there was a county clerk legislative committee meeting and I don't know if you guys have heard anything about the elections, the primary election moving to May and the general in November, so taking the August election out of play. Um. That's real close to being passed, but it won't be in effect until twenty-seven, so next year we will still have potentially a May election, August and November. Um. That is it.
Treasure?
Anything's nine thirty point?
Randy?
No.
MSU. Oh, gosh.
Oh, boy.
Well, I thought since I was gonna come, I might as well be ready to speak, so, um. I don't know if any of you were able to attend the First Impressions Tourism Program last night at the Lumberjack, um, from Michigan State University Extension's Tourism Program. Um, this is a, an audit that's been created that allows, um, our staff to go through and sort of be a secret shopper in a community. Um, so that happened and I did bring some copies of the report. I didn't bring, um, one for everyone, but remember this is just a summary. There's three copies that you can pass around. Um, one thing to remember is that, you know, this helps communities really understand how people perceive both their assets and their challenges. Um, so when the five members of the team come and do an assessment, they try to make sure they're hitting and visiting different things within the community. They check out the community's online presence before they arrive because that is really what people in tourism do. Is they, they research, um, using the internet before they travel. Um, so the feedback is really widely varied and, um, there have been programs like there, this program has done audits in Grayling and in the entire Roscommon County. And what we've seen as a result is just in, I've noticed in Grayling, more signage directing people how to find certain community amenities. Um, in, uh, in Roscommon, they created a freshwater trail where people can visit communities within Roscommon. Um, if they go to, there's these giant part of fish. If you go to the one of the big fish, like there's one in front of the rich field town hall. Um, if, if you go there, you can scan a QR code and it will tell you about what's available for you to visit in St. Helen. There's one in, um, Denton Township. There's one near Higgins Lake. They're gonna add more of these to the community, but it's just, it's enhancing the ability of people to really understand the assets within a community. And so there are potential outcomes like this for West Branch as well. Um, you know, there's, there's so much that this community has to be proud of. Um, and sometimes it's helping people who live in the community really realize how the community stacks up against other communities. Um, so that was delivered last night. Um, there, this is a summary that you're getting. There'll be a more in-depth, uh, final report that's available on our website. And there is a digital version of this, so if you didn't get a hard copy, I can make sure that you get the digital copy of the report. Um, I'll also say that our staff visited the lumberjack, um, for one of our staff meetings, um, I think that was in September. We got to tour all of their meeting facilities. Um, we have a network of educators that do trainings all over the state. Um, we took the initiative then to share with all of those people across the state what an asset the, the renovated lumberjack is and how it can accommodate various size meetings. We can have, we can have education sessions where we're attracting hundreds of people and we can need space for, you know, fifteen to have a really good meeting. And we saw that when it wasn't in there. So that's another reason why I'm just highlighting that that's where the First Impressions Tourism Program happened yesterday. Um, Phil Durst is, uh, was at that program, so he is not here tonight. Um, but what I can share with you is that, uh, the feeder calf sale, uh, was Tuesday and was very successful. Um, there were more than more calves than last year, but some, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, somewhere between six hundred and thirty and six hundred and fifty. And I would have to have Phil tell you exactly what that number was, but prices are up, um, in the beef industry. Um, and so, uh, that's a good, that's a good thing for producers, um, and for folks who are buying into that. Uh, yesterday, um, Stephanie Stevens, who's our four-H program coordinator, was at Wyndhamor Prescott Elementary School for their family ag day. Um, and got a chance to talk to a lot of kids about what they can do with four-H and have fun activities in conjunction with our staff person at Wyndhamor Prescott and with the program coordinator from Iosco County. So we had a real team effort there, reaching out to those kids, uh, at the elementary school and, and those students all got to hear a little bit about what four-H is, um, if they didn't already know. The other thing I'll just highlight quickly is, um, I asked for some money to be included in my budget from the fund balance, uh, for the village to support, uh, someone who could promote the Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program. That person's based in Iosco County. That's where I had office space that was ready to go. Um, but we're promoting that program now. Um, the program relies on a base, uh, education program called the Foundations of Gardening Class, um, which is a ten-week program that really is in-depth and helps people understand how to be successful at gardening and how to go be in a process of lifelong learning when it comes to gardening. Cause I talk to gardeners of all ages and they're never stop learning, so that's a good thing. Um, right now, uh, scholarship applications are open for that Foundations of Gardening Class, so the cost of the class is three hundred and fifty dollars. Um, uh, and the scholarship would knock a hundred and fifty dollars off of that, so I just wanted to promote that while I had the chance. If people go through the Foundations of Gardening Class and want to become Extension Master Gardener Volunteers, they can apply to become volunteers and they go through our volunteer screening process. Um, the class that is, the scholarship applications are open for now begins in February twenty-twenty-six. So people need to apply now and then register, um, through December and then it will start in February. And if you have any questions for me, I would be delighted to answer.
Questions for Julie. Commissioners?
I have none.
Thank you.
I don't have any question or comment.
Go ahead.
And we'll probably, Mr. Wiltzy and I sit on transit and Wade Promotions was there today. We had a transit meeting today.
Okay.
The ramp for the bus for the four-H thing is just cool as all good. I, I am so impressed with, it's, it looks great.
Yeah.
It really, really does, so I, that's.
Thank you. We're, I'm so excited every time I see it out and about in the community, um, and I'll be like, there's our bus, um.
I, I just, I, I saw it. It just took me back. I'm like, wow, it just jumps at you. So it's neat. It really is.
So much.
Thanks. Thanks, Julie.
All right, thank you.
Any department that, or, or that I missed in the room? Anybody on the phone? Jeff, do you have a report at all?
Uh, not really. Um, just that, uh, my committee members will get together and, uh, look at the bid that we got. Um, I haven't opened it up yet, so they'll meet on the first for that. Um, Jared's gonna be going to DC as part of the, uh, Veterans Leadership Committee, uh, to discuss some veterans', uh, veterans' benefits with, uh, legislators there. I believe that is in mid-November. I don't have the dates here. Um, and then, uh, other than that, uh, the Veteran of the Year Ceremony again is on the eleventh of November at eleven o'clock at Forwards. And you're all more than welcome to come.
Thanks, Jeff. Any other elected officials, department head that I missed? I don't believe so. Manners from the floor, any commissioners? Motion for adoption?
No.
Commissioners reports, Commissioner Wiltzy?
Um, a few things. Uh, last week we had, uh, Ogumah County Housing, uh, Committee Meeting, and I know I touched base a little bit on this. Um, you know, we kind of felt like that first six, nine months, we kind of were spinning our wheels, but I am really happy to report that some good things have been happening. Um, between three different developers, over one point five million dollars, uh, worth of state funding into, uh, a handful of different projects for the single-family homes, duplexes, multi-unit homes. Um, that's all happened pretty much in the last calendar year. Uh, right now, Michigan Neighborhood Three Point O program just came out. We currently have four different developers that are applying for that within the county. And, uh, we're actually right now trying to set up a mini-session, another one of our open houses, but this one just to be real precise, this Michigan Neighborhood Three Point O, so we can help people that are in the process and anybody else that would possibly maybe want to still get involved. So it is really good to see that some good, real good things are happening with our, uh, with our housing here in Ogumah County. We got a long ways to go, but we're, we're getting there. Um. Transit has, Commissioner Serbuk, had a meeting, uh, this morning. Uh, we've got a number of different things to kind of touch base on. Um, Tony's probably gonna be coming to us pretty soon with a few items. I'll wait till he comes to, with us on those. Um, but we did offer a, um, retired army vet, uh, the mechanic position. And in the hopes of him, obviously, we'll be taking over for Ray, uh, beginning of the year. If that all goes good with the vet, he should hopefully maybe be able to start, uh, mid, mid-November. So we're happy that that position is hopefully gonna be filled and it comes to someone with a lot of experience. Um, Tony did talk about our aging fleet. Uh, you know, we do have, I believe it is fourteen, fourteen buses and two of the newer vans, um, through the state every year. We can apply for however many that we feel we, we might need, and then it gets all up to them, obviously, with funding. Um, but it looks like we are gonna probably for twenty-six, apply for six new buses. Um, I do have positive information since we have been on, uh, the negative, uh, ride for a while with funding for the transit. Um, with the new budget that's passed the state of Michigan, um, we actually are gonna have an increase in funding from twenty-eight, twenty-eight plus point some percent, thirty-four point eight, four percent. Uh, it's right around, uh, six percent, um, which would, will be huge. Obviously, um, we definitely know between our state and our federal funds, federal funding is gonna stay the same at eighteen. Um, that that only does pay for roughly anywhere from fifty to fifty-five percent of the public transit. Um, and then re- the rest of the revenue's up to, you know, the riders, which we all know the ridership money is very, very meniscal, so that means the rest of that comes out of the fund balance. Well, you guys have heard us say, and what we've been trying to do is figure out how we can be more efficient and productive and save money there at the transit. Um, so as the village talks have started, I, I know next month we're gonna have a very, uh, long talk during the village and be able to really come back to you guys and say this is what we think that we'd have to be looking at for a village. So we'll have that information next month. Um, I'll let Mark fill anything else on there. Um, for the transit, I just got a couple of other things. This past Monday, we had the Northern, uh, County Commissioners Meeting up in Roscommon. I joined that via Zoom, just a lot of normal business. Um, there was a lady there, uh, talking about solar energy. We obviously know solar energy's become, uh, a pretty popular thing and it's taken up a lot of our agriculture and it was a pretty long topic of how we can kind of live with solar energy and the negatives and the positives of it. Um. Uh, tomorrow morning I have a sting meeting, uh, up in Mayo. And, uh, that's all I have for today.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, in the last couple of weeks, uh, airport, um, twenty-one dollar, twenty-one hundred dollars that we spent on, on the, uh, people that come in and. people to come in and, and survey whether or not we have deer. Uh, did find, didn't really see a lot of deer, but they saw a lot of, uh, signs of deer. So, um, as I was talking with the airport manager, they are on government time, so it's probably a couple of months before we hear any results about their study. But, uh, they did, uh, they did tell him that they saw much sign of, of deer on the airport grounds and stuff. Um, so there's still a good chance we might get a fencing program out of this. Um, I attended the city of West Branch meeting. Uh, there was just some talk about how the, uh, Oktoberfest thing went. They talked about their streets and stuff. Uh, street projects getting done. Things like that. I had reported on my township in Oldham, cause they had an early meet, earlier meeting this month. Um, I didn't miss solid on getting up to Foster Township, but uh, there's, uh, a number of things happening up there. Their fire chief resigned at the last meeting. I, I am unders- I understand. So, uh, um, what else did I go to? I missed the, uh, road commission meeting this week, but I guess it was just the main thing there was setting the schedule for twenty-six. And not much different there. I think that's about all I got.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Well, I had early meetings, late meetings, uh, the last meeting I was at, I got a crap, couldn't tell it, but they got three point eight million to remove the dam in Rose City. And the city was to pay seventy-five thousand, I believe, on that deal. Supposed to be done in the spring. And I believe the name of the place is here on Pines. It's taken it out.
Are they just, are they replacing it or removing?
Taking it out. They can't. They couldn't afford to replace it. Uh, they, they've had some other bad luck. Uh, they lost their automotive in town. Uh, another business out in the business loop left. So.
The automotive in Rose City?
Pardon?
The automotive in Rose City closed?
Yes, used to be, uh, American plastic and gay plastic. Before that, that's done. Consumers left. So there aren't a whole lot left over there anymore. Uh, Leupton got a new fighter chief, I heard.
Who's that?
I believe it was, uh, David Wynn.
Okay. That's not, that's the Hill.
Yes, not Rose City, the Hill Rose.
Yep.
So, yeah, that's pretty much all I.
Commissioner Serber?
Uh, I attended the Veterans Memorial and we pretty much covered that during the rest of the meeting or prior. Uh, DHHS, we've covered that. Claims, we covered that. Uh, Commissioner Wiltie covered transit that we went to this morning. The only I'd like to add about transit and we, we talked about, uh, the funding and where the county portion is, that, um, beef percentage somewhere around there. Ridership, what the, what the people pay when they ride, that revenue is right around forty thousand dollars a year. So it's not a huge amount of money coming in. So we're really dependent upon the millage to fund, uh, transit. I attended Horton Township last night. They had to postpone their meeting twice for different reasons. The big conversation at Horton Township was the proposed Oldham County MTA bylaws. Um, that's going to be an interesting meeting when, when MTA meets later on in November. So that's all I have.
What's, I got that email. What's the date on that? So everybody's aware.
Uh, same day as our commissioners, uh, the twenty-fifth.
It is, isn't it?
Yes.
So we.
That West Branch Township.
So we won't be able to attend.
Yeah, depends what time we get out of here. We may be, we'll miss dinner, but we could get tail into the MTA probably.
Hey, I, um, the only thing I was able, I was off the grid last week, but, uh, prior to that, I did attend the Michigan Works sponsored career quest down at Saginaw Valley State University in the Rider Center, and that was an amazing event. There was about eighteen schools there. It is again a career quest. It's not a job fair. Um, it was, it was pretty, pretty neat to see, very eye-opening. Every possible career you could imagine was there hands-on. Um, there was a sugar factory there. There was, uh, pilots. There was healthcare. Um, there was anesthesia actually with equipment. There was EMS. There was construction, people pounding nails. Um, you, you, anything you could, concrete, anything you could possibly think of, agricultural is there. Um, that these kids, I, I believe it was sophomores primarily, uh, got to two hours they get in this career quest to go to the various stations to see the various careers and it was, it was, uh, Michigan Works sponsors it and it was very, very, um, nice to attend. It was something to see. It was really nice to see some excitement in some kids' eyes and, uh, probably for them to see some things that they, they didn't know existed. So Michigan Works sponsors that. It's a huge event. It's the biggest event that they sponsor all year. Um, besides that, I have not attended anything else since our previous meeting. I did want to wish my mom, who is a Logan Township supervisor and is typically on, she was on earlier, we must have lost her, a happy seventieth birthday today.
Oh.
General, you have something?
Yeah, just a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, EMS, uh, we had a board meeting last week, uh, currently in negotiations with the union contracts. Um, myself and the UnderSheriff Paul, who is the chair on the EMF are in those talks, uh, that medical response vehicle, that Ford pickup truck that being paid with the, uh, last millage that was passed by our voters for, uh, equipment. Uh, hopefully we'll be here in a month or so, uh, and I know they're having, they're getting everything ordered for that. So as soon as that truck gets here, it'll hit the road. I think that'll be great and it will help for first response, especially in some of our, our roads in the wintertime where we get more snow and they can't get them plowed. I think that vehicle is going to be, uh, very instrumental. Uh, and then just one more thing. The EDC Board wants to thank everyone for the support. Uh, they're very happy that they are back, um, on the line with twenty-six budget. Obviously you guys hear me talk about the EDC consistently. We're doing great things. More business coming to town. A lot of good things going on with the EDC and this coming Wednesday, we have our economic outlook breakfast, um, um, that morning, we have a couple of speakers and, uh, anyone who, uh, has a business to think about, starting a business is more than welcome to attend that. That starts at seven-thirty at Forwards, uh, Convention Center.
Any other commissioners forget anything? General public comment? Any general public comment in the room? Any general public comment on the phone? Uh, we have a closed session. Tim, will there be any business after closed session?
Likely, there will be.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion with, with closed session to consider strictly connected with negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement pursuant to MCO fifteen point two-six-eight C.
The motion, Commissioner Serber? Report from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
It has.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Election?
I said, yeah, I'm sorry.
Ready everyone? Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Was the rest of it there? It would have been listening. So I was pretty happy.
Oh, I did. Think I did.
Sorry.
Make a motion to approve a resolution with a letter of agreement with United Steelworkers AFL-CIO Local eighty-five sixty-nine.
Motion, Commissioner Serber, support from Commissioner Mayhew. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wilson?
Yes.
Mark Serber?
Yes.
Greg Scott?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
You're up.
I gotta stay.
What'd you say?
You gotta adjourn and then you can stay.
All the favor.
I.
Well, it's mostly carries. I apologize, guys.
I stay.
It'll be better next. You got much better than I was.
But it's not a board session. You gotta stay, but the rest of it, well.